Want to call the meeting to order if I can reach it? Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I don't think our screen is working today.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And tonight, our invocation will be given by Pastor Jamal Brown from the United Church of Christ here in Holly Springs. Welcome back Pastor. It's always good to see you. We talking love tonight?
Huh?
We gonna talk love tonight?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
He's firm but flexible. If you don't, you can talk about it.
Good morning, I mean geez, good evening.
Good evening.
Alright. Well, I was, I was gonna share this in regard to wisdom. And for me, love is wisdom. And would you agree in the gallery today, what the world needs right now is love, sweet love? Can we agree to that?
Amen.
Amen, amen, alright. James says, "Now if any of you lacks wisdom, you should ask of God, who gives to all generously and ungrudgingly, and it will be given to them." As you administer for the, in your service to the town, let the wisdom of God guide you in your decisions. Let us pray. Father, we thank you dear Lord for all that you've done. We thank you for your wisdom that we can call upon. I pray tonight, oh Lord, that those who are in the seats of service and those who are in the gallery, Father, will yield to your wisdom for all. Bless now, oh God, with your presence, for wisdom comes from you. Grant us access and clarity and discernment as we go through the assignment for this hour, and Lord, we give you thanks, in Jesus' name, amen.
And the church said?
Amen.
Been there before. Item number four, adjustment approval of March 6, 2018 meeting agenda, Mayor Protem on the screen.
Motion to adopt the March 6, 2018 meeting agenda with the following changes, to remove the approval of the February 20 minutes from the agenda.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to propose removing number eight I from the consent agenda.
Okay.
The new business.
Okay, we'll also make a motion to remove the agenda item eight I.
Okay. Oh, has been made, all favor, our motion is approved.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Posed, motion passed unanimously, thank you. Item number five is public comment period, and Kristin Quante is number one tonight. Come on down. Who's that with you? Is that Justin Sellers?
Thank you all.
Thank you.
The Holly Springs Chamber Board of Directors sincerely appreciates the commitment that the town has made to our chamber organization for the 2017 and 18 fiscal year. Our members in the Holly Springs community is, are fortunate to have visionary town leaders such as yourselves, who foster and support the growing relationship between our two organizations. I wanted to take the time to highlight eight different initiatives that our chamber has accomplished this past year with the support from the town. The first was the Partners Breakfast held last spring, breakfast and discussion of business issues with leaders from the Holly Springs Chamber of Commerce, Holly Springs Town Council, Holly Springs Town Department Directors, Wake County Board of Commissioners, Wake County Board of Education, Western Wake County Legislation Delegation, and key business leaders from organizations in Wake County. The next is the Committee for Community Engagement. The Holly Springs Chamber acknowledges that a strong community is reliant on a healthy and viable nonprofit sector. The Chamber created this committee to bring together our nonprofit members to network, share best practices, and collaborate on current and future events in our town. The Center Street Market was a continued collaborative effort between the Holly Springs Farmers Market and the Chamber. Our economic forecast, which was held two weeks ago, were Mark Vitner, a senior economist with Wells Fargo, on how the regional and national economic outlook looks for the coming year. That was in partnership with two other local chambers, the Apex Chamber and the Fuqua Wave Arena Chamber. We produced the 2017 Southwestern Wake Community Festival last summer, or towards the end of the summer. The festival was a tri-chamber initiative between Apex, Fuqua Wave Arena, and our chambers. They brought together businesses and residents in Southwestern Wake County. We hosted a summer leadership series last summer. They were lunch and learn style events on the topics of team building and motivation, change management, resilience, and conflict management and negotiation. We co-partnered, the Chamber partnered with the Salamanders team for the NCBA Division World Series last summer. The GS, the GRSA calculated that the economic impact for this area was around 900,000 this past summer. And then last, we created and established the Holly Springs Chamber Foundation this past fall. The foundation is our 501(c)(3) nonprofit focused on the education, workforce readiness, and entrepreneurship in Holly Springs. It was a sold-out event, and it will be back this coming fall as well. As always, the Chamber Board of Directors, our staff, and our almost 400 members thank you for your continued support. We look forward to our continued partnership with our town this coming year. Thank you.
Justin go say.
Thanks.
Oh yeah, Will.
Thank you. Thank you very much. At this point in time, we'll close the public comment period and go to agenda item 6A, Special Recognition, Board Appointment, Oaths of Office, and that would be, Joanie, where are you? Well, there she is. And that would be coming through the door, Joanie Powell! You're on kid.
I just made it come out of your lawn.
That's grand entrance to yours, that's what it is.
Hey, it's my pleasure to be mine to introduce you to the oath of office with our board members. We have a board of adjustment members here. All right. And, um... Yes. That I will support and maintain. The Constitution and laws of the United States. The Constitution and laws of the United States. The Constitution and laws of the state of North Carolina. And the Constitution and laws of the state of North Carolina. That are not inconsistent therewith. That are not inconsistent therewith. And that I will faithfully discharge. And that I will faithfully discharge. The duties of my office as a member. The duties of my office as a member. The Board of Adjustment of the town of Holly Springs. The Board of Adjustment of the town of Holly Springs. North Carolina. So help me God. So help me God. Thank you. Thank you.
Welcome aboard Erin.
My name is Mark Brady. I'm Mark Brady. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support and maintain. That I will support and maintain. The Constitution and laws of the United States. The Constitution and laws of the United States. And the Constitution and laws of the state of North Carolina. And the Constitution and laws of the state of North Carolina. Not inconsistent therewith. Not inconsistent therewith. And I will faithfully discharge. And I will faithfully discharge. The duties of my office. The duties of my office. As a planning board member for the town of Holly Springs, North Carolina. As a planning board member for the town of Holly Springs, North Carolina. So help me God. So help me God.
Alright. Welcome aboard Mark.
And that concludes the oath of office.
Thank you Joanie. Agenda item 7A, Public Hearing, Budget Preparation, Public Hearing of Several, our town manager, Chuck Simmons.
Hi there, good afternoon. Yeah, this is a, really a, it's not something that's required by state law, but it's a, it's a Holly Springs tradition. We like to encourage public input as we get started with our annual budget, operating budget process. This is really outside of specific projects, but our annual operating budget, of course, runs from July 1 until June 30. We just had our first, I guess, official budget meeting, or unofficial budget meeting yesterday. Administration and Finance Department got together, we started looking at our revenues for the coming year. We'll be getting departmental requests in later, either this month or early next month, and then of course we'll proceed with preparing the budget. So tonight is a, is a bit of a kickoff, and we ask our residents of the town if they have specific projects or initiatives that they would like for us to take a look at while preparing the budget to do so. We've gotten, you know, some feedback via email, I think the council's already got that. We've, we've certainly put that, put that down, and we'll be evaluating those requests along with any others that we hear tonight. So.
Thank you Chuck. At this point in time, we have no surprise, no one signed up for the public hearings, so we must be doing something right. So at this point in time, we'll open most of the public hearings. There is one, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Who was it Linda? Oh.
She didn't sign up.
I know Jackie. I didn't see you sign up, that's the reason I was mistaken, so Jackie, go ahead and introduce yourself and go.
Okay, will do. Good evening, messrs, Town Council ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for this opportunity to be able to speak tonight, and also, I just wanted to say a quick thank you to the town's engineering department, Kendra, Scott, and Erin, for giving me a lot of help in pulling together the relevant information, and also to Adam too, the help was invaluable. I'm here to follow up on my previous public comments visit in January, where then I explained to you the dangers our busy roads are to our cycling community. Today, I'm here to ask you to consider the provision of funds to help make those roads a little safer. Please, let's watch a video that I have first before I go into some of these slides, as it really does quite have an impact, and there's really no way I can explain it except for you to watch it. Okay Joanie?
Yeah, Billy's gonna help you.
Thank you.
That's good.
My name is Jackie. I'm a sister, a wife, a daughter, an aunt, a friend, and a coach. I ride my bike because it makes me happy and it keeps me strong. I ride my bike with friends because it's fun and we enjoy the beauty of the area that we live in. But when somebody yells at me from their car or throws a Coke bottle at me, it makes me scared and it makes me sad. I, like you, have a right to be on the road too. I have the right to take up the size of one vehicle if I needed to. Let's follow the law. Please share the road and let's all be safe. So it's quite powerful, isn't it? Rick Sullivan actually gave his time to film 12 of those individuals from the group that we formed called CARE, and so we're here to try and educate drivers and cyclists to be safer on the roads. But getting back to this now, so providing safer streets for cyclists is really what I'm asking for, and I recently heard that Holly Springs, the town that I've happily lived in for the past 15 years and proud to be a resident of, was ranked one of the top safest towns in North Carolina recently. I never knew, who knew? So that's fantastic, yes.
Safest number one, over 20,000.
I'm sure a lot of people here didn't, didn't know that either, so we should be proud of that. This is a great town to live in. And over the 15 years I've been here, it's grown in size, there's been lots of changes, and we've got a large fitness community. We have a lot of runners, you know, there's over 2,100 runners now in the Holly Springs Run Club, which is fantastic. And Team CBC, which is a cycling club out of Carolina Brewing Company over in the Business Park, has over 1,300 members. And so we are an active community, and we want this to be a safe place for us to have kids, to be fit, quality of life, all that is appealing for people moving into the town too. So I pulled together some numbers from some of the events that actually take part in our town, and there's several, if you're a cyclist or a multi-sport athlete, you become familiar with these events, and these are all fundraisers as well. The Raven Rock Ramble has 706 riders, last year anyway, and an average of around that number every year. I don't know how many years it's been going, maybe 10-plus years at least. Goes out of Harris Lake, so those cyclists ride through our roads to get out of town from Harris Lake, it's within the town limits. The Firecracker Ride, which used to go out of Cary, is now moved here, and for the past three years, it's gone out of the brewery, over 800 cyclists. Raleigh 70.3, the Half Iron Man, has over 2,500 athletes, and they come over from Lake Jordan and they ride through our streets. The first year, we actually rode past my Holly Glen, which was fantastic because there were signs up for me, and it's great to be, to have an event like that in our town, and it brings in commerce. So every week, when the weather is nicer, you'll see, sorry, 80 to 150 cyclists going out for rides at the weekend in Holly Springs. And, you know, it's, it's bringing in people and people enjoy the streets. So Caroline, CBC, Team CBC is a cycling group, as I mentioned earlier, based in the park, the Business Park, that's where we tend to meet and ride out of. They do good work, they've raised over 1.4 million dollars for Bike MS. They've also raised over 10K in the last year alone for the American Diabetes Association. So it's not all about us, we're not all narcissists, we do try and give back to the community. Unfortunately though, we give back too much, and sometimes that is with lives, and as I said in the video, a cyclist in America is killed about every six hours by a driver. It came very close to home over a year ago, when I call her one of our own Lori Cove, who worked for the town of Cary in their town department, sustained a devastating brain injury. She was left in the middle of the road, dead, by a hit-and-run from a guy who already has a past. He's been convicted, he's due in time, but he'll never bring, you know, Lori's full quality of life back. In fact, there's several of us tonight who are here wearing pink for Lori, so thank you for wearing pink for Lori. And others have lost their lives, and let's not forget them, and I don't want to be a statistic. So NC DOT did bring together some bicycle policies, the House Bill 232, the Bicycle Acts, Complete Streets, the Complete Street Policy, well, let me go back a moment just to this. I just want to explain very briefly that when we ride a bicycle, we're riding, we're actually driving a vehicle, we're riding a vehicle, and cyclists have to take the responsibility of that, okay? And we have the same legal rights as drivers, so again, we have to take the responsibility of that. The state law says now that bicycles must have a headlight, a taillight or reflector at night, that would make sense. And when you are a cyclist on the road, you are allowed to take the full space of one vehicle, so sometimes in traffic, what we call assertive positioning is actually a safer thing. Drivers sometimes hate us for that because they don't understand why we're riding the middle of the street, but it is our right to be there, and sometimes, if you've got two-way traffic, it's not safe to ride in the gutter on your bike or in the shoulder, because we're supposed to now have a four-foot minimum passing, and if people are trying to pass you when other oncoming traffic is coming, they can, they can run you off the road, and it can kill you. So assertive positioning is, is also something that we are allowed to do, but again, it's give and take, we all have to get along. So the Complete Streets is in 2018, which is this year, is providing workshops and education, it's highlighting that people really need to build more sustainable communities and connectivity between neighborhoods by providing and encouraging alternative forms of transportation. As a cyclist on a road bike, we tend to use roads to pass out of town to get into safer, quieter counties, surrounding counties. So what I'm asking for is for the, the town yourselves to consider putting money to one side from the budget to provide some signage on those routes, of which I've mapped up in a moment, 24 miles of roads that we use to pass through Holly Springs and get out of Holly Springs. It's to avoid the major highways where the most traffic is and distracted driving, which I know you can't do anything about, okay? But we're trying to avoid being with them. And the sign agent tell really themselves, these are the ones that get attention, they educate at the same time. Not a lot of people know about the state law, so the sign on the left tells it all. And the sharrow, which is the bicycle with the arrows on the road, can also be partnered with the sign that says bicycle or bike may use full lane. So it's again, it's an education thing for the, the drivers, and it helps back us up that when we are riding the middle of the road, well, we're allowed to be there. And another one here, highlighting maybe a bike route, of a popular route that cyclists might take to get out of town, this one's in Cary. So the map, I believe, is coming up, it's a PDF, I will, this, this is the map that will show, showing about 24 miles right now that I've highlighted, and in a moment when we put the map up.
Just keep clicking.
Keep clicking. Alright, I'll do that, and then I'll get back to it. There you go. Alright, thank you. So this is a start. I know as the town grows, there's going to be more roads. In a perfect world, my vision is, you know how you have infrastructure already designated for when you build roads? And you have to have certain things put on the roads, and you have to have, when you're building houses, you have to have fire hydrants put in, it's all to code. Why not let's think about creating the perfect utopia in Holly Springs where we have bicycle signs that are part of what we do for the community? You don't have to build bicycle lanes, they're actually not that practical. They only work if every bicycle lane connects to another bicycle lane. Works in Colorado, because that's whole part, the whole part of the infrastructure, they have designated biking lanes, but that's way too much money, okay? So I'm being practical here. So these are the streets that I personally know we all use to go in different directions, and we tend not to go out on Holly Springs roads towards Cary 1010 that way, because that's a death wish, okay? We may take Bass Lake to pop up out of and go towards Hilltop, Needmore, Anger that way, but one of the most main routes is from the Business Park out past 12 Oaks, getting out that way towards John Lake, New Hill Holloman, I know that's all still in town limits, Avon Ferry Road, I live off there, so I'm biased, but it is a main vein. Path Panny Grove, Wilbon, Cass Holt, Honeycutt, Rouse Road, again, there's buildings going up there, there's school development there, but there's no reason why we still can't ride our bikes out there. And Rex Road, so you can see sort of the picture of where we go, I'm sure you've seen people out there on the bikes all the time. So just going back to, how do we go back?
See the wheel on the mouse, just roll it backwards towards you.
Got it, okay, so that's the 24 miles, that's where that's come from. And the engineering department helped give us a draft of the costing, give or take something, margins, but providing signage about one, about every mile on 20 a mile, dollars a mile, okay? So there's your, your range, 144,000 to 192,000. Nobody's fallen off the chairs yet, so that's a good sign. And then hopefully, like I said, the utopia would be safer streets for all cyclists, young and old, brave, and hopefully those of us who don't have a death wish. So thanks a lot for your time, we really appreciate it, and I'll leave that with you.
Thank you Jackie.
Thank you.
Is there any comments or questions to Jackie before she leaves?
No, I, thank you so much for the research and going through this, especially in the map, you know, to really inform people of where you do ride and the streets that are, would benefit from this type of thing, so thank you so much for putting the time into that.
You're welcome.
Jackie, the, the cost for the signs, that was just for the signs or the actual lanes?
That's all included. No, we don't want, don't want lanes, bicycle lanes, as in, do you mean bike lanes? Those are not, it's too expensive, it's just not, I mean, you'd have to widen roads to, to do that, and it's, so it's not a practical way of doing it, it's more dangerous, because some, we do have some.
We do have some.
I know, and thank you for that, if, if any of you were responsible for including those. When they stop, though, they drop us straight into the traffic, and then it's like, okay, now what? Because usually they stop because the road isn't wide enough to accommodate it, and then it's a bottleneck, because we get thrown into the middle of the traffic. So we don't really need that, I mean, okay, it would be fabulous if that was all part of the infrastructure. It's very expensive, so I'm asking for, for this, because it's a lot less expensive.
Right. Okay.
Okay.
You gonna run into Iron Man this year?
I am.
I hope you all know that, she is really an exceptional cyclist, so I thought I'd tell you. You won in Hawaii or came awful close, didn't you?
Well, let's not go there.
That's been a while, never mind, never mind.
I am gonna race for Team USA though, in Denmark at Worlds. In a perfect world, my vision is, you know how you have infrastructure already designated for when you build roads? And you have to have certain things put on the roads and you have to have when you're building houses, you have to have fire hydrants put in, it's all to code. Why not let's think about creating the perfect utopia in Holly Springs where we have bicycle signs that are part of what we do for the community. You don't have to build bicycle lanes, they're actually not that practical. They only work if every bicycle lane connects to another bicycle lane. Works in Colorado because that's the whole part of the infrastructure, they have designated biking lanes, but that's way too much money, okay? So I'm being practical here. So these are the streets that I personally know we all use to go in different directions. And we tend not to go out on Holly Springs roads towards Carey 1010 that way because that's a death wish, okay? We may take Bass Lake to pop up out of and go towards Hilltop, Needmore, Anja that way. But one of the most main routes is from the Business Park out past 12 Oaks, getting out that way towards John Lake, New Hill Holloman, I know that's all still in town limits, Avon Ferry Road, I live off there, so I'm biased, but it is a main vein. Path Panny Grove, Wilbon, Cass Holt, Honeycutt, Rouse Road. Again, there's buildings going up there, there's school development there, but there's no reason why we still can't ride our bikes out there. And Rex Road. So you can see sort of the picture of where we go. I'm sure you've seen people out there on the bikes all the time. So just going back to, how do we go back?
See the wheel on the mouse, just roll it backwards towards you.
Got it. Okay, so that's the 24 miles, that's where that's come from. And the Engineering Department helped give us a draft of the costing, give or take something, margins, but providing signage about one, about every mile on 20 a mile, dollars a mile, okay? So there's your range, 144,000 to 192,000. Nobody's fallen off the chairs yet, so that's a good sign. And then hopefully, like I said, the utopia would be safer streets for all cyclists, young and old, brave, and hopefully those of us who don't have a death wish. So thanks a lot for your time, we really appreciate it. And I'll leave that with you.
Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you, Jackie.
Is there any comments or questions to Jackie before she leaves?
No, I, thank you so much for the research and going through this, especially in the map, you know, to really inform people of where you do ride and the streets that would benefit from this type of thing. So thank you so much for putting the time into that.
You're welcome.
Jackie, the cost for the signs, that was just for the signs or the actual lanes?
That's all included. No, we don't want, don't want lanes, bicycle lanes, as in, do you mean bike lanes? Those are not, it's too expensive. It's just not, I mean, you'd have to widen roads to do that. And it's, so it's not a practical way of doing it. It's more dangerous because some, we do have some.
We do have some.
I know, and thank you for that, if any of you were responsible for including those. When they stop, though, they drop us straight into the traffic and then it's like, okay, now what? Because usually they stop because the road isn't wide enough to accommodate it. And then it's a bottleneck because we get thrown into the middle of the traffic. So we don't really need that. I mean, okay, it would be fabulous if that was all part of the infrastructure. It's very expensive, so I'm asking for this because it's a lot less expensive.
Right.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Good.
Okay.
You gonna run an Ironman this year?
I am.
I hope you all know that, she is really an exceptional cyclist. So I thought I'd tell you, you won in Hawaii or came awful close, didn't you?
Well, let's not go there.
That's been a while, never mind, never mind.
I am gonna race for Team USA, though, in Denmark at Worlds in July, so I will be representing your great country of which I am a citizen, even with this accent, you'll take anyone, apparently.
Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jackie.
At this point in time, we'll close the public hearing, but don't forget, if you have ideas or comments, you can always email, you can always call, call any one of us for thoughts and ideas on the budget. Get some?
Mayor Sears, we did actually have someone do that today. I didn't read it all the way, but you all have an email from Joe Fianjoy. So I just wanted to call it to your attention and noted in the minutes that he did provide input as to his hopes for the budget.
And I sent, I also sent one from somebody.
Yeah, I did too. Thank you.
Did you copy me with it?
I think.
Okay. Oh, look.
I used the big email address.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you again. Jen@8A consent agenda, mayor pro tem.
Motion to approve consent agenda?
Give me a second. Motion being made in second half favor.
Aye.
Posed. Motion, passage, advocacy, thank you. And last but not least, in other business, I always want to do my crosswalk safety program story. Still there.
Did we?
Sorry?
We removed an item from consent.
Eight I.
Yeah.
Town Hall Commons.
Yeah. Do we need a motion on that? No.
Just go to that.
Just go with it.
We did already.
Removed it from during the addenda adjustment. It's a new business.
Yeah. We're good. Back to crosswalk safety.
Yeah, you actually need to address, it is a new business item, but as per a deposit for the Town Hall Commons.
Right. It doesn't show up on the agenda because we didn't have any new item, new business items, but once it was removed from consent, it was moved to a new business item. So it's just not showing up on the agenda.
All right. John, you want to go through that one for us?
I believe Aaron is here from representing the Engineering Department to give you an update on the 242 project and why we are asking or why we added that item to consent. And we can hopefully answer your questions about that.
Come on down, Aaron. Just got back from the plane yesterday, right?
That's right.
I get around.
Hope you can bear with me for a minute.
Sure.
Did put together a few slides.
That's a lot of slides to go through, Aaron.
This is not the important part, I'll tell you that much.
Just checking.
Okay, I'm gonna start off a little background on the project, abbreviated background, and then we'll move into the issue at hand for tonight. So the Town Hall Commons project, council has seen this one several times in the recent past, but it's pretty much the cornerstone of the vision we've had for the Village District for the past 15 years. The project is located in between Main Street and Avon Ferry. Let me start this slide. The project is located in between Main Street and Avon Ferry, south of Ballantine and adjacent to where our Rogers extension will continue through Main Street to Avon Ferry. The project, as you can see here, the conceptual layout includes four separate projects that are all coming together to create something that's greater than the sum of the parts. The gray building here is the 242 building. The yellow is the town's parking deck. This blue building on the south side of the New Rogers Street is the block project. And then surrounding all of these projects on the roads and this parking area to the west of Avon Ferry is called the infrastructure project. So as part of the town's responsibility, we are responsible for the parking deck project and the infrastructure project. The parking deck will provide 190 spaces, give or take, for public use and for the 242 building. And all work that is located within the curb line of the Main Street, Avon Ferry, and Ballantine, and the New Rogers block. The infrastructure project, which is separate, includes work on Main Street and Avon Ferry. We're doing decorative sidewalks. We have some utility improvements, our water sewer lines are getting replaced or new ones are being installed. We have a stormwater detention, a management device that will treat and manage the stormwater for this entire project. And early on in the project, it was decided that the best way to construct the parking deck was to have it bid with the 242 building here in Gray. The reason for that is because the projects share a lot of structural members that are integral to both projects. Tonight, we're gonna be speaking about the retaining wall, but I'll get to that in a little bit. As far as parking, we are looking at adding about 389 spaces. That includes what the block project is adding to downtown. Some of you may have noticed that the parking lot on the south side of Ballantine on Avon Ferry has already been closed. This is preparing for construction. And Public Works has done a great job preparing a temporary lot on the corner of ARP Street and Main. So they did some striping and some string lines so that employees could park there for this, you know, construction duration. So town staff, along with our developers, have been working on this project for the past 18 months. Our developers are here tonight from the 242 group. And we started a concept plan, we moved to construction, drawings and design, and we are right now at the point where we're transitioning from design to construction. Town Council has seen this project several times. We've approved master plans, developer agreements, we're recently a budget. So the project was, the infrastructure project was advertised, and that's the road work, the utility work. And that includes the area surrounding the block, some of these on-street parking spaces, Roger Street is included in that, some of the sidewalks. And we advertised it for bid, and we had a bid opening on February 27th, last Tuesday. Unfortunately, at that bid opening, we received no bids. So that was a bit of a hiccup. After the bid opening, I talked to some of the contractors that were present at the mandatory pre-bid meetings. It's kind of a typical thing you'll have with more complicated projects. You hold a meeting several weeks before the bid opening and you kind of just go over the project together and eliminate any unknown areas, unknown things that are costing owners money. Contractors just raise their price, pretty much. So we held two of those meetings and I called up all our attendees and, you know, the common denominator answer for why they did not bid was that everyone's busy. Contractors were sitting on two and three bids that day. The bid opening was a Tuesday, which is a very common bid opening day. And they just, that was the main complaint. One of the contractors had an issue that there wasn't enough earthwork. That's how they make their money. So they just were not gonna bid. So that leaves us in a situation where, you know, my goal for tonight was to come here with a contract for the infrastructure project along with the parking deck project. Prior to all this, the 242 developer, as it was set forth in the developer agreement, had the parking deck bid out from their contract as they were able to utilize an informal process for the bid. They had submitted their bids to us and the bids came in under budget, as was approved by town council. It came in at about 95%. And it was close to about $175,000 under budget. Unfortunately, we got no bids, we received no bids, and, you know, we had some options tonight. What do we present to town council? What do we do? How do we keep this project moving forward? The 242 building has a lot of commitments from tenants. I keep on saying this is like a train that keeps on moving. So we're trying to find the best way to move forward with it. So I talked a little bit earlier about the common structural elements that are required for both projects. You can see the rough outline of the 242 building located here. In order to grade the pad, to bring the earth up to elevation for the building, a retaining wall on the parking deck must be constructed. Without this retaining wall that's shown in red, the grading can't be completed and the 242's progress will be halted. Now, that has some ramifications to itself. You know, 242 has lined up their contractors, it's building construction, which I'd say is more involved than typical civil, but they have many different subs that are involved in the project. And material ordering is also a significant concern. We've already seen the prices of concrete and steel going up recently. There's also some federal tariff issues going on right now, which could also escalate those prices significantly, and that would affect both projects. So the goal tonight was to come forth with an option to keep the projects moving and limit the exposure for the town as much as possible. So in meeting with our 242 developer, the idea to put down a portion of the money of the parking deck so that their project could, their contractor could construct the retaining wall necessary to grade out their pad and they could move forward with vertical construction of their building. The original developer agreement called out that, you know, upon council's approval of the parking deck bid, 50% of that money would be placed in the escrow. And then the 242 building could draw off on that project when approved by the town until a point when those funds were exhausted, and then the town would deposit the remaining 50% of the parking deck. So the compromise that we came to was, how do we get the contractor moving so that the project is not delayed, you know, holistically? Delays to their project would cause issues with our parking deck as well. So approximately 10% would be required in order to construct this wall. It's about a 14 to 15-foot cast-in-place concrete wall. It holds up the structural members for the parking deck and also retains the earth on I think that's, that's pretty much what we're asking for. We did already re-advertise the infrastructure project. So we, our hope is that on March 23rd, bids will come and we'll have a second bid opening for the infrastructure project. One of the contractors that was present at the first bid opening, he did not submit an actual bid. He complained of being too busy. He did commit to bidding on the project the second time around. But our goal would be on March 23rd to open up bids and then present them to town council on April 3rd. And that's, that's pretty much the summary of the situation we have tonight. Open a question, then it's quite the predicament.
Questions or comments, Aaron?
Thanks, Aaron, for the presentation. Just one question, the parking deck structure itself, is that, was that bidded as part of the 242 project? Or is it just a shared structural features like the wall?
Everything within the block, so from the curb, the back of curb inwards on this entire block that was part of the town's requirements, was bid alongside the 242 building. The prices were separated out, that was included in your item, I hope you received that.
Yeah.
But all of the work within here is included. So we've got a small surface parking lot at the entrance to the parking deck, that's the underside entrance, the ramp leading up to the parking deck, that's included, dumpster location, all the sidewalks, everything within. There are a few utility elements, some storm drainage pipes that would not be included.
So their contractor will construct, based on the bid they already have, will construct those things and the parking garage. So we're putting the 10% in escrow, which is of our portion of that bid, correct? Is where the 10% comes from? Or is it just the retaining wall, 10% of the cost of that?
No, the retaining wall is included in the bid presented in your documents. So it's, when we do get a bid for the infrastructure project and we do present the bid for the parking deck, we'll only have 90% left to approve at that point, if the 10% is approved tonight. Is that, is that clear?
You're paying 100% of the parking deck. Right, right, right. But the original deposit was 50% of our cost, right? So we're reducing that now to 10 for the portion that's already been bidded. When we get the rest of the bid, we'll fulfill our promise in the agreement to fund the whole 50% in escrow.
That's correct. So the developer agreement had us paying 50% now, 50% when the deck is 50% completed. What the manager had liked to do because of the no-bid situation on our infrastructure, not knowing the full scope of what you're gonna have to pay, wanted to do 10% now, which basically gets the retaining wall built, and then 40% in about 30 days at the, when we receive the bids on March 20th.
March 23rd at 11:00 AM.
23rd at 11:00 AM, to be specific. And then, and then the remaining 50% of that would occur when the engineer says, hey, the parking deck is 50% of.
Okay.
So the contractors from 242 weren't interested in doing this project?
They did not submit a bid, no.
Okay. And what's the backup plan if we don't get any bids next month?
Yeah, so that is a question to consider. We've talked with town departments, Public Works is interested in performing some of the work. If we don't get a bid this next time, again, on the second bid, the requirements for the number of bids opened are decreased. So my first bid, you need three bids to open the bids. On the second one, you only need one. So if we don't get it on the 23rd, we would probably re-advertise again for another bid. And we also talked to the contractor of the 242 building. We are waiting for a change order that they will provide us to construct some of the required infrastructure. So that would be like the Roger Street portion in between Main and Avon Ferry and some of the other road items surrounding the building. I'm not exactly sure where we're gonna be with the details on that change order, but that is an option we're looking at. And at that point, maybe Public Works would come in and work on the parking lot to the west of Avon Ferry or some of the kind of detached portions of the project.
Okay.
Any other questions at this point?
No?
Nope. Council, do we need a motion on this or is this for information only?
Yes, if you, I don't know if it's phrased in the.
It's in the packet.
In the packet, in a way, but, you know, it's authorization to, you know, to fund the escrow amount at 10% of the contract amount would be the motion we'd be looking for.
I'll make the motion to approve 10% funding or $340,000, the Town Hall Commons parking deck project to be deposited into an escrow account as detailed in the report and adopt an amendment to the budget to facilitate the transaction.
Kendra, any update on all the equipment we've been ordering? Or Erin, anybody?
Just how are the construction contractors spending the week? What was the start?
Two weeks? Excellent. And when Jackie was present, presenting, she mentioned the safest town in North Carolina. This is the second one, we just got this. It's from the National Council for Home Safety, we're the first and most safest city in North Carolina, over 20,000 population. So if anybody would like this, or take a look at it, I'll leave it up here, we can get more, just let me know, okay? That's all I got. Anybody else?
I have two things. Last meeting, I had mentioned that we had a wrestler from Holly Springs High School that placed. There was actually two other, and I wanted to give them recognition. Jackson Maroney, who is the number one in the state, representing Holly Springs Wrestling Team, I believe he's at 120 pounds, and Josh Lair took second in the state. That was pretty impressive to, to see three Holly Springs wrestlers place at the, was it two weeks ago? So I was really, really impressed with that. The other thing, I don't know if we can talk about, is as we are moving closer to decide on the vendor for the Town Hall Manager, I was thinking it might be a good idea that we put together a committee of not only ourselves, but potentially some department heads that can be part of the process to when we're choosing a new town manager. I don't know if that's something of interest. There's five of us here. I would like to have input from town staff, especially department heads, on who would be the best fit for replacing Chuck Simmons. I don't know if that's something we can consider that now, maybe adding three more people? I don't know what your take is on that.
Yeah, council authorized us to request proposals from search firms. We've gotten five in so far, the deadline's Friday, we may get a few more. So that'll be at your next council meeting as to who to hire to help you do the search. Then they'd be probably open to that suggestion, I'm sure, whoever we select.
Yeah, so I don't know if you guys agree with that, or?
Yeah, I think that'd be helpful.
Okay. Happy to help, too, if needed.
Yep.
Okay.
So that's, the next meeting will be when we talk about the project. It's an aggressive time.
When you, yeah, the next time will be when you select the firm that you want to help you go through this process, because they'll kind of take care of everything for us as far as getting the word out into the world and getting the candidates in, and helping y'all go through the process of selecting them.
Okay, all right. What else? Anything else?
And just to follow up on that point, you probably do want to talk at some point, maybe the next meeting, about naming an interim manager. I don't think you're gonna do yourself a good service to, to think that you're gonna be able to find the right person in that, you know, timeframe. So there'll have to be some, some overlaps, if you'd be thinking about that yourself. Name an interim manager so that you're not constrained by the time periods that you have.
Right. Okay. Anything else? Town manager?
Yes, sir. This coming Friday, from 9:00 until 4:00 at the Hunt Center, we have planning information day. So we'll have members of the planning staff that will be available to meet with members of the public, find out what's going on, what projects are coming to town, or if you just have planning-related questions, there's an opportunity to, to meet the staff. We also do that, it's, I think, a couple other times a year, I think sometimes on Saturdays for those that can't make it on Friday, you know, that have jobs, for example, that can't make it. But I wanted to share that with the public. And then also, next week, Thursday, we have groundbreaking for Town Hall Commons project. It's to the block just to the south that Erin was sharing with us a moment ago, and that is at 10:00 AM. So certainly the council, you know, is reminded of that, and everyone is invited, you know, to that project. That's all I have.
Bring shovels?
Yes, I think we have some shovels downstairs. We will dust them off.
I'll bring my personal shovel.
Okay. Yes, you have one.
Chuck, you said next Thursday?
Yes, ma'am, the 15th, that's on the 15th.
Thank you. Can you also have it on your calendar? Maybe tell me.
That's, that is it, yes.
Okay, counselor? Who wants to make the motion?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second. All favor.
Aye.
We adjourned, thank you for all coming. Thank you, Patrick.